Good evening and welcome to the October 16, 2013 Board of Education meeting. We were in executive session from six o'clock on discussing personnel and contractual matters. At this point, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I see we have some pig students here tonight. The meeting, if it goes till nine o'clock, we will take a break at nine and then you can come up and sign out. You're welcome to stay after that. And if we break earlier than when the meeting's over, just come up and sign out. At this point, we'll do introductions.
Lynn Lenhart.
Joanne Cunningham.
Kate Navarro.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt, excuse me, Matt Downey.
Michael Cooper.
Diane Steever.
Judy Kehoe.
Item number two, approval of the minutes of October 2nd, 2013, regular board meeting. Is there a motion?
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? I just have one comment. I believe it was the first item, it said Judith Kehoe had made the motion and it should have been Lynn Lenhart.
I'm with the last.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That carries. All right, number two, Student Senate report.
Can I just take this out?
Yeah, you can pull that up.
My name is Shannon Haggerty. I'm the president of Student Senate. Today at our meeting, we discussed the possibility of a Halloween dance, which would take place November 8th, and it hasn't been officially approved by Mr. Landry, but he's given the okay to continue looking into it.
He's here tonight, you know. Put him on the spot.
We also discussed our now annual dodgeball tournament, which will be November 4th to the 8th, and other programs that we're delegating senators into, like discussing things with the YMCA and the process to interview the athletic director.
Okay.
That's it.
Is the Halloween dance going to be a costume dance?
Yes, it will. We're going to be strict on the rules, though. Going to be strict on the rules, though.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I just ask a question. Does anybody ever bring up anything, like just how is school going with the Student Senate or concerns?
That's something that we've actually talked about, talked about with Mr. Landry. That's one of the problems that I think with Student Senate is that not a lot of people understand what we're actually doing and what's going on. And so, we've come up with the idea of having a meeting with Mr. Landry once a month to really discuss, like what are the problems besides the events that we're doing? What are the problems in the school and what can we do to solve them? So, that's an idea that we've actually discussed.
Well, that's good. Or student concerns. You don't want to talk about problems, but concerns that maybe kids have.
Mm-hmm, definitely.
And I just, okay, that's great. Good to be meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Did you want to say something, Scott?
In terms of the Halloween dance that has been tenanted, draft, morning, has been approved, Jim is available, so we just want to make sure we have the I's dotted and the K's crossed.
I thought we just said.
Oh, really?
No Miley Cyrus costumes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you, going to Lynn's question, do you, and I don't know how your meetings work, so maybe you already do this, do you ever have kind of open meetings for kids to just, who aren't part of the Student Senate, to just come and see what happens there and...
Yeah, no, we don't. That's actually a really good idea, so that they could actually see what we're doing.
Yeah, kind of see, you know, kind of demystify a little bit what the Student Senate's all about and, you know, maybe, you know, they would learn something you guys...
Yeah, if we had it in a more open space, they could see.
Yeah, I mean, much like we give an opportunity for the public to come and make statements, it's sort of a similar concept. I don't know, just a thought, kind of going to Lynn's point.
Definitely. Yeah, that's great. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Downey and fellow members of the board. It's my privilege to report to you this evening on several happenings here at BC. First and foremost, obviously, if you've been reading the paper with the Times Union over the past couple of weeks, you've been able to understand that we are extremely proud to be recognized as the number one school district in the capital region yet again. What is special about this ranking is that it's not just a snapshot in time, but it's really a reflection of the depth of achievement that our students, our faculty, and our community have been able to accomplish over the past several years. I believe over the past six years now, Bethlehem has been in, I believe, the top two with four of those six years being at number one, and this is our third straight. There are also several other rankings that come out at this time, and we have done very well at each and every one of those rankings as well across the state for upstate schools. But on the heels of being named the number one school district among the 83 in the capital region, one other thing that came out on October 9th was that we were rated among the top 10 school districts in all of upstate New York. And according to Business Firth, Bethlehem is now ranked number nine in academics in its annual rankings for 2013, and it's up from its position last year at number 11th and number 12 for the year previous to that. So, much of the credit belongs to our teachers and staff who continually give their best every day, as well as our students who regularly and tirelessly try to perform at the highest levels. I want to thank all of them for making this a reality for our district and also a leader in the new reform agenda as we keep up with the achievement levels that are expected of all of us in this time. So, thank you. In addition, this past weekend, we had one of our own compete at the Ironman World Championship. And just to give an update, on October 12, Ms. Vincent, the BCMS health teacher, completed the Ironman World Championships in Hawaii. Fran amazingly finished fifth in her age division. She steadily climbed through the field in a very grueling competition that lasted over 11 hours for her run. However, this competition was really a testament to Fran's dedication and determination to succeed. As she models our mantra, "Every day we give our best at Bethlehem Central." Just to put it in comparison, I think there was some 10,000 entrants in the world championship. If you look at Ms. Vincent, she finished fifth in her age group. As a female contestant on gender, she was in the top, I think, 220 athletes to complete. And if you look at all of the athletes, she was, I think she was somewhere around 1,200th place. That's almost in the top 10% of all athletes that competed. That's an amazing accomplishment, and I'm sure the board, as well as all of us, the students in the community are very proud of one of our own. In addition to that fine accomplishment, we also have a flying pizza box. The capital region's first mini makers fair was this Saturday, I believe, at Emma Willard. And what was really interesting is 50 makers, or sort of inventors, signed up with all kinds of projects from interactive maps and robotics to wearable electronics and bike generators. However, one project specifically caught the eye of a blogger entitled "All Over Albany", and that project was a flying pizza box created by 10-year-old Emma Edgar. Emma is a fifth grader here at Glenmont Elementary, and she loves making stuff. Her interest in remote control comes from her family's work in the field, especially with her dad, but it is also fueled by the Girl Scouts program that she participates. Can you believe that? She took a pizza box and made it fly with just the materials and ingenuity that she learned from her father, as well as her own education with the Girl Scouts. And it's really nice to see different little events that go out and highlight the accomplishments of such young students as they challenge the dream. So, congratulations to Emma on such a great job. Also tonight, and I just want to make sure, is Tim Bannas and Shelley Beator here?
I thought so.
I wanted to make the board aware of this, as well as the community. I know our communication department is doing it, but Students Against Destructive Decisions are spearheading a public service effort here in Bethlehem. Now, it's a little twofold. One is the great message that it sends by our students. I'm going to give them a chance if they want to say anything, but also, it helps out for Celebrate My Drive is the event that it's honoring to help understand our decisions that we make. So, you know, with Student Against Destructive Decisions and Tim Bannas and Shelley Beator, who have been spearheading the effort, I'm going to ask if they'd like to come forward and tell us a little about what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay, so, sad, along with what Dr. Douglas said, we have been trying to put up, we're going to be doing posters around the community and just make everyone aware of the Celebrate My Drive, which is October 18th through the 26th. And what it is, is you are pledging, you can pledge once a day, through email and Facebook. And it is for teen safety in driving, and you can win, each school can win, the grand prize is a Kelly Clarkson concert and $100,000 grant. And then, the other prizes are $25,000.
No, that's basically just it, but if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy.
So, one of the things so the board knows, this is entirely student initiative. Both these individuals came and sought the district's support if they were to take on this endeavor, and they have provided all the avenues. I know they're working with Joellen Gardner in our communication department because we tried to help lay out a plan for them that it's not just Bethlehem that they're trying to impact, but not only Bethlehem, but the greater capital area as well, and that their efforts there could potentially pay off for not just our students, but the entire region.
When did you say the voting starts?
The voting starts this Friday to next Saturday.
Okay. And anybody can vote?
Anybody age 14 and up can vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim and Shelley. Additionally, ladies and gentlemen, we had a great Walk to School Day event held at Elsmere, Hammagill, and Slengerlands last week. It was a great morning to be out, a fantastic turnout of all of our students at all of our schools, taking the time to either walk or ride to school safely and also under supervision, and really benefiting the healthy efforts of walking and riding to school. It was a fun-filled morning, and many thanks go out to the teachers, parents, and administrators who helped coordinate the events for the kids. Also, we'd like to thank the Bethlehem, the town of Bethlehem's Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee for their assistance with planning and arranging the use of the electronic road signs at the Elsmere location, as that can be more of a challenging area, so. In addition, Glenmont had a heart-healthy event, lots of red Dr. Seuss and plenty of Glenmont students at what they do best is the Fun Run. And the Glenmont staff and students gathered outside under sunny skies and ran an obstacle course with a Dr. Seuss theme. While they weren't on the course, classes danced to music, played with hula hoops, and had lots of laughs together. Many thanks to Mrs. Nolan and also to Mrs. Operley for the fifth graders who helped set up, clean up, and model the course for the entire school. Just another way that we helped to build a very strong foundation for our community. And in relation to the academics, at the middle school, we were fortunate enough to have a presentation by Dr. Randy Kale. Dr. Kale was at our middle school last Tuesday for an informational workshop for parents on tips for homework success. The event was a huge success with over 100 parents attending. I have to comment, between the Common Core and this evening, it shows the dedication and commitment of our community. And in other districts, they fight to get people out. I'm glad that we have so many participating and paying attention, not only to our website, but to also our students and our faculty abound across the district so that they can openly avail themselves of the resources that we are able to provide. The next night for Dr. Kale, as he's going to host a couple series of coffee with Kale, will be November 12 at Glenmont Elementary at 9:30 a.m. The session topic, "When Kids Won't Cooperate: Secrets to Behavior Management." And believe me, I should show up because Carter's challenging me at times.
I didn't know there was a class we could take.
Well, there's four little coffees that you can, so we will be promoting them as well across the district. Also, you know, we always like to look at our alumni, too, and make sure that we see the products of our work over extended periods of time. BCHS graduate Megan Kelly was honored by being given a primetime slot on Fox, and we do not condone any news station, one way or another, but to have a graduate such as Megan Kelly make the move to the nine o'clock hour in Fox's primetime slot with her new show, The Kelly Files, is something that we should be proud of because she represents Bethlehem, as well as Albany Law School where she graduated. This is a major accomplishment for Kelly because it is also the fact that in television station standards, most don't necessarily like to redo their television lineup. Fox is undergoing a major overhaul, probably the first since 2003, and Kelly is one of the linchpins to that overhaul to get a different viewer base. So, we're very proud of Kelly and Megan and all of her accomplishments, and we are hoping that, you know, as a former BC student, maybe she can possibly come home at some time and share some of those accomplishments. So, we'll be trying to reach out. One of the things that was interesting is a very successful event was taking place all last week, and that was our Farm to You Fest 2013. At the middle school, several events occurred where students could guess the weight of the pumpkin, they could make a salad on Friday, and students helped build those salads with ingredients from BCMS's own school garden, and lots of fun activities in between. They've had many great music concerts, I'm sorry, I skipped a line. These activities really build the core curriculum as well as students' own initiatives in doing something for the environment, which, as our middle school is reflective of a green ribbon school for the nation, this exemplifies their internal use of the best resources and also shows healthy eating habits as we go about our year, and they took the week to honor that activity and event, and we want to thank all the students and the staff. And I know Mr. Warford has been a very big driving factor behind that and congratulate them. Overall, there's many music activities coming up in the next couple of weeks. We hope that everyone gets a chance to come out. We will be putting those out to the board on the updates as well. There will be many fine activities that show off and highlight the students' work. Like I said earlier, I've had the opportunity to get out to many senior nights and extracurricular activities, and I can't say that I'm more proud of everybody, the way that they act with guests on campus, as well as when we travel to a campus. So, I want to thank everybody for their hard work as we try to live up to our mantra, "Every day we give our best," whether it's an administrator, whether it's a parent, whether it's a student, whether it's a teacher, and whether it's in general, just a reflection of our school district. So, thank you, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Douglas?
No, the only thing I would say is I went to the middle school salad, Build a Salad Day. It's, the garden is unbelievable. I don't know if the board has seen it or most of the community, but, I mean, it's just an amazing thing. And the other thing that was interesting is how the students, when you were giving them a free salad, just went wild over lettuce and tomatoes and, you know, it was, I mean, it was pretty impressive to see the healthy eating. But I was talking to Mark Warford, amazing stuff that he's done with the Green Team. I don't know if he's ever been to a board meeting to present, but, I mean, it really has, is a game changer as far as a leadership, you know, of sustainable activities. It would be a great presentation. We should kind of queue him up at some point, just all the recycling stuff and the composting, and, I mean, it's incredible stuff. So, great job at the middle school. Want to say a big shout out to both Mike Plugman and Mark, and also to you, you know, you didn't give yourself credit at all for the great outcomes for Bethlehem, but, you know, you've been the superintendent here for, I don't, three years, four years?
Two.
Two years, but you deserve credit also.
Feels like four.
So, you know, really, really wonderful job. I mean, great job for you as well.
Thank you.
And Joanne, I know with the garden at the middle school, they give a lot to the food pantries, too.
Oh, really? Yeah, amazing.
Yeah.
If they can keep the deer out, that's one of their challenges, I think.
Yeah, it's just amazing.
Malorganite works. You can get a Lowe's.
Oh. Mike, did you get that back there? Malorganite?
It's a cheap fertilizer, and it seems to...
Oh, we probably can't use that on school grounds.
Oh, I'm not.
I might have.
Mark.
Okay. I'll talk to Mark.
He doesn't need it.
All I can say is, I guess this is the only way a superintendent can ever use this word. In the words of Billy Fusillo, if you watch TV, "The gardens are huge." I mean, they literally go from one end of the building to the other, and they keep getting bigger, and they're not just planted there. I mean, these are manicured gardens, and it takes somewhat of patience and perseverance by all the students to make sure that they maintain them, especially with the deer population in Delmar.
Actually, they're probably responsible for the deer population.
What I was going to say is that with the composting, I mean, they probably don't use any fertilizer because it's just natural, which is great. And I think it's great for the students to learn how, you know, how, what farmers actually do, where those vegetables come from. Other than supermarket.
Thank you. Next up, the Board of Education report. Any board members have anything they'd like to report since the last board meeting?
On Friday, October 4th, I participated in the NISBA Board Officers Academy. It was an all-day training session for new board officers. There were three sessions. One was on mediating conflict and managing relationships for performance. Of course, we never need mediating of conflict here, of course. The second was on making common sense of the Common Core, and the third was on superintendent evaluations. And I gave copies of the materials that I got to Matt and to Dr. Douglas, but Lynn was there as, in her role as a NISBA officer, and she gave Dr. Douglas her pamphlet today. So, that will be going into the Board of Ed library, so if you're interested, you can look at the materials.
Yeah, it probably just needs a label on it because you can't tell from a folder what it is.
Yeah, we'll get that taken care of.
I was just going to say that in addition to the excellent workshops, what I always find so wonderful about NISBA and CASBA events is being able to talk to folks from other school boards and share their experiences and our experiences and find out the diversity of our state in terms of the roles of boards and the challenges that they face. So, it's always both encouraging and humbling to hear what other school boards are going through, so I find that equally useful.
And speaking of that, tomorrow night, there's, you know, the capital district school boards is having a session called, on New York State Assessments, called "The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly," an open, respectful panel discussion, and that title was made long before the commissioner had his little bout down in Poughkeepsie. But anyhow, he's not going to be there, but Ken Wagner, who's the assistant commissioner of curriculum, will be there, along with Joe Corr, who's the superintendent of North Colony. It's going to be at North Colony High School, and Damian Singleton from, the assistant superintendent from Giddleland will be on a panel. So, I know some of us are attending.
I think we have roughly four.
Roughly four or exactly four?
Roughly four. I'm waiting on the fifth person, if their schedule can permit.
Okay.
For tomorrow.
Because I said I would drive, and I don't want to leave any board member behind. And I just had another question. I realize I, well, I don't know whether, I don't have the most up-to-date news, but somehow the things were getting settled finally in Washington at the 11th hour, but if there have been any effects on us as a school district from the shutdown of the federal government... Okay. I just wondered.
Yeah, I think it's protracted. We will start feeling it in either Title Money, Federal Lunch Program, and so forth, but I think it's going to have to take a very severe length of time for the government to be shut down. Although the can's probably been kicked down the road a little bit, I think we'll be, we could potentially be going through this right at budget time as well.
Anyone else? And I also would like to, as Dr. Douglas had, congratulate all the sports teams that have had their senior night so far. I've been able to make it to the football and to the field hockey, and it's been really a nice event for the athletes as they complete out their senior year in the various sports. And then, next week, there'll be several of us at the NISBA conference out at Rochester. I believe you'll be going, Dr. Douglas, also. So, and we'll report back at that after, at our next meeting.
With the sports events, it's been great this year for the weather.
Yeah.
I know last year, we had so much rain, which made it difficult even to use some of the fields, so this year, it's, you know, but just the opposite, and the warm weather.
Greg's enjoyed this year very much.
But it's great they've done well, too.
Can I just say one thing? I just want to say thank you also because on the Facebook page, I guess, I don't know if it's Joellen who posts all the pictures of all the events, but Farm to You Fest is on there. I think the Walk to School Day photos are on there, which, thank you, Dr. Douglas, for coming to Hammagill, by the way, for our walk to school. But it's a great job of kind of showcasing all of these things on the web, so if you haven't checked out the Facebook page, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, I'd say that's one of our big improvements this year. We have tons of photos.
And a lot of the photos were on the webpage, too.
Yeah.
So, in case people didn't go, you know, don't use Facebook.
Yeah. All right, tonight for our presentations, we have two. The first one is a presentation, initial presentation on the Hammagill sewer easement request. Greg Nolte from our operations, Ian Paul Purnman from the town will be presenting.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a short presentation by the town of Bethlehem. They are seeking and starting the process of requesting an easement for a sanitary sewer on our Hammagill property. It's not the first easement. I want to say it was about four years ago. The board approved an easement at Slengerlands for the Kenwood Pump Station, and then quite some time ago, when we were doing the major renovations to the middle school. The town actually approved an easement for us for our second means of egress going out near the water department. So, tonight, we have Paul Pennman, town engineer, and Monica King from the department as well, and we will bring up... Excellent. My eyes are so bad. For this one?
Yep.
All right. We're going to increase this. Maybe one more. We'll start with that. Nope. We'll start there.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. A little bit of background is, since about 2005, the town has been working on upgrading our existing pump stations. We have 37 of them. As Greg mentioned, we did one at the Slengerland School. We currently have a pump station on McGuffey Lane. It's our Hammagill pump station. It's right in, I can't really see the clicker, but right where that arrow is. Okay. That station was built in 1972, and it's over 40 years old. It's basically at the end of its useful life. As part of the improvements that we've made over the years, we've been able to determine that we can eliminate the pump station by installing a gravity sewer from the pump station to an existing sewer that runs down at the base of the hill right near the bypass. In order to do that, we've been working with Greg to come up with a possible alignment of the sewer to minimize disruptions. We originally looked at running along the property line, however, that's, there's a nice stand of trees in that area, and we didn't, we would have had to clear about a 30, 35-foot wide swath, and we destroyed a lot of the screening for the residents along Westchester Drive. So, what we did is we came up with an alignment to come along McGuffey Lane, cut through the existing tree line, and that cut through basically minimizes the clearing of trees. I think we have to take down one or two mature trees. If we come along McGuffey Lane, you're going to have to take down some other mature trees. We prefer not to do that to keep up the screening for the area. We then come down, basically at the corner of the parking lot, there's going to be a structure, but that's out of the playing area. And that cut through basically minimizes the clearing of trees. I think we have to take down one or two mature trees. If we come along McGuffey Lane, you're gonna have to take down some other mature trees. We prefer not to do that to keep up the screening for the area. We then come down, basically at the corner of the parking lot, there's gonna be a structure, but that's out of the playing area. It's behind the existing backstop. And then basically running along the edge of the field, there's pretty much now a heavy brush area there now. So what we would do is actually clear the brush and actually make your field a little bit bigger. There might be need, might need to take down one or two mature trees, but we're basically avoiding taking down anything major if we can help it. We then get to the back of the property and we're basically cutting down the hill. And then where, you see where it goes to yellow? That's in second parcel. It is owned by the school district. It's not part of the original parcel. It was obtained by the school district from the Waldemires. One of the things we found out this week is we, as part of our due diligence, we do a, a title search on it. And it turns out that the Waldemires did put a deed restriction on that parcel that prohibits clearing, that would effectively prohibit this installation. However, we've talked to our town attorney and he believes that if we get an approval from the Waldemire's original sellers to do this, that the school board could grant the easement. So we've actually reached out to the Waldemires to see if they would be receptive to it. We haven't actually gone over the details with the Waldemires. However, if that were to fall through, we do have a possible alternate alignment. If you look at this, basically, we would come down, same alignment, stay on the same parcel, and then get a private easement from this homeowner and tie into the sewer down in this area. It's a little bit more cumbersome, if you will. So we prefer to, to do the original alignment. But again, that's gonna require us to get some, the approval from the original deed owners.
Is that, the yellow lines on the first property, what about closer to 32, there's a yellow shaded area there?
Right. That's the same parcel. What happens is that parcel is, there is, the, the gap between the two is the City of Albany Water Line.
So it's all one parcel, it's just there's another easement?
Well, it's not an easement. They asked, the City of Albany actually owns that right of way. But it is the same parcel. So that's why it's shown in two sections. And then where it ties into the existing sewer, we have existing easements and existing sewers there right now. So that's the proposed alignment. In terms of schedule, what we'd like to do is do the installation this coming summer when school is out, kinda what we did at Slengerland School is we started as soon as school got out. And construction would probably take a couple of weeks to get the sewer in, but with restorations and everything, probably a month. So our goal would be to get in there once school's out and be out of there by the time Pop Warner starts their football season. Sometimes it gets delayed and things that we did at, at Slengerland's is, you know, put up construction fencing, put up fencing to keep any kids away from the installation. But our hope would be to get in and out while school's out of session. So that's basically the routing, the schedule. One of the things we do for public notification is we typically notify the residents along the route with door hangers and then we also put it on our website. If the board was interested, we could expand the area, possibly include Westchester and maybe some of the other adjoining areas. But we do notify the residents to minimize impacts to them. So, did I miss anything, Greg, or? What's that? Yeah, what, basically what this allows us to do is by eliminating the pump station is increases reliability. Right now, it's a 40-year-old pump station. This doesn't always work. And when it doesn't work, you have potential to back up into the school, into the neighbor residences. By going to gravity, there's no mechanical systems involved. It's a lot more reliable, so.
So it won't look like Slengerland's?
No, no. It won't be, it won't be, we're actually getting rid of the pump station. But the Slengerland's is also tucked down in the bottom, kind of out of the way. The reason it was moved there is that it was originally along Kenwood Ave. And we would've had to put it right at the street line. So to try to be considerate of the neighbor, the homeowner that lived there, we tried to push it into the back, out of the way, so you can't see it as much. You can still see it, but kinda hides it. But this, this station, actually, it's eliminating the pump station. We're getting rid of it and just gonna be.
So what would you see down at the bottom there?
Uh. You'd be seeing the same thing you're seeing right now. The, except there'd be a 30-foot clearing in the yellow area. But, but again, if you're looking from the street, it's still gonna be, because it's at an angle, it's still gonna be screened by existing trees. The only thing that we're gonna be putting in the ground is some actual manholes, which the covers are flush with the ground. And those are those dots up there, basically.
There's not gonna be a pump station. All you're gonna see is pretty much those manhole covers.
It's a buried pipe, is what we're putting in.
Will that interfere with playground playing or anything?
No. What, what we're did is, we have, every time there's a change in direction, we have to put a manhole in. So what we did is the one pump station, there's a backstop out there. That one manhole is gonna be behind it, out of the area of play. And then the second one is down in the wooded area. So it's not gonna be in the, in the field. So once we're done, it would be restored back to the way it is. In fact, Greg and I are talking about actually expanding the field a little bit because right now the area we're going is heavily brushed. So we'd be able to kinda give you a little bit more playing area.
When would the notifications go out to the neighbors?
Uh, it's typically a week or so in advance of the work, of when we start work.
Paul, one of the things you said is you go towards the back of the Hammergrill lot. You said you have to take down a hill?
Well, no. What, what, if we came along the property line, there's a knob there.
Okay.
So right now, we're in 10 to 15 feet deep. If we were to go along the property line, we'd be over 20 feet deep. So our trench would be wider. We'd have to take down more trees. It'd have to disturb more area, so.
I guess what I'm saying is like right in this area?
Okay.
You see how if you're clearing a 30-foot wide swath all the way through here?
Mm-hmm.
It could attract that, becoming a natural trail for people to navigate and get to there. How would we sort of, I mean, is there any plan to, I'm sorry, to make sort of a cutoff here so it doesn't look that way?
We could.
As well as out here to make sure that we don't invite anyone along?
Well, a couple of things. If you look at this area down here, it's at the base of a hill. It's not really accessible. However, there really is kind of an existing trail right now, which is the Albany Water Board. There's, where this is, there's a gate there with an access. They do patrol it regularly on a daily basis, the Albany Water Board does. But the way, if you look the way we're going, it's not gonna be totally evident that there's a clearing through there because when we come right here, we cut across, if you're looking at it head-on, there's gonna be trees in the way because it's at an, it cuts across the property at an angle.
Yeah.
So again, we'd be, if there's some suggestions about changing the alignment a little bit to give a little more of an angle, we'd be more than happy.
Or even something that after the work's done, that the area is restored as much as possible?
Well, we could put some plantings back in some of the areas. The, the issue is we don't really wanna put trees over our sewer easement because they, the roots end up going.
Or even bushes.
Yeah. We don't really wanna put anything over the sewer, but we'd be more than happy if there's some landscaping or a gate or we'd be more than happy to take that into consideration.
We actually do have a nature trail back there that maybe we'll incorporate this as an entrance to it possibly.
Mm-hmm.
Just as long as they don't see the exit.
Is there any safety issue with those manhole covers for kids that are, you know?
No. I mean, they're all over the place right now. If you have public sewer, they're there right as, I mean, I have one in my front lawn. But, but again, knowing that it's an athletic field, the two that we're putting in are out of the way. Again, one's behind the existing backstop. And then the second one is out of the field area. It's kinda down the hill a little bit.
Right, yeah.
So, but they're flush with the ground. It's basi, it's basically a round metal disc about 30 inches wide.
Right, yeah. The only one that would get any kinda kid traffic is that one up top there.
Right, it's one of them.
This one right here?
And that's actually up.
That one?
Is that behind the backstop?
That's behind the backstop where we come out of the trees.
As far as, as far as board process, you're adding this information. What does the board wish, or what information does the board need to have either from the district, the town, or the community over the next couple of months?
Well, I would, I would think that we'd wanna at least have the Hammergrill community involved and make sure they're aware of this potential easement, too.
Yes, Dave, can you put it, you know, have any input yet?
I do not know. We have not opened this up to really further discussion, so. This is sort of the town's first blush to say this is what we'd like to do. Now, really, we sort of put together the process for any type of potential.
Yeah, and the other point of comment tonight was to see if there's any specific concerns or specific issues. What we've done in the past is that we've done some public information meetings for bigger projects. We didn't do it as part of the last sewer project, but if the school board would like us to do a public informational meeting, we'd be more than happy to do that. Kinda same, kinda scenario we're doing here, whenever you'd like us to do it.
Maybe even do a Hammergrill PTA meeting or something, a presentation, just so that they would know what the impact would be and, you know, be aware of it.
Again, what we're looking for tonight is kinda, are there, having the public information is one concern, but are there any concerns that jumps out at the board members that you'd like us to address? We can look at potential, maybe some additional, a little bit of landscaping to kinda restrict access.
Well, just a question. So the pump station goes away.
Yes.
So what is gonna be there? So you remove it and then it's just grass or landscaping or whatever?
Yeah. And that's, that's an older station, so most of the station, you'd probably drive by and not even know it's there. It's basically concrete structures that are in the ground. The pumps are in the ground. The new model we've gone to has a building above ground. We've tried to eliminate confined space entry. It's a safety and occupational issue. So there's a couple of structures that are maybe a foot or two off the ground. Once we're done, all the structures would be level with the ground. And we're basically, you know, putting it into, like, again, a pipe.
Logically, to me, you know, you'd have a straight line if you came straight in off McGuffey Lane where the existing pump station is, went straight along the.
The property line.
You know, the property line to that other point. You know, it'd be a short distance. And, and, I mean, are there really that many trees? Because even if you have that there, the neighbors would still have a buffer with other trees that are closer to the, to the field line, you know.
It saves us a little bit of pipe, but again, it's a, elevation-wise, there's a big knoll out there, so we'd have to be over 20 feet deep. So the extra length of pipe is actually saved in construction cost because you don't have to go as deep. When you're talking 12 to 15 feet deep, it's not too hard to shore up the trench. But when you're going 20 feet, you have to get into sheeting issues. And it's just a major constructibility issue. So we could look at it that way. If that was a preference of the board, we just felt it would be less impact to, again, you'd be taking down at least 30 feet of screening of mature trees.
Lynn, about 10 years ago, the board approved National Grid along Elma Avenue to put in a run of, you know, I think hydroponics or whatever it was. And somewhat, it was, it was similar to this where we could've gone along the, the back property lines. And a lot of the residents kind of didn't like that because they didn't want that thoroughfare potentially where kids could hang out and then go along. So they preferred it along the field line to, and to keep that buffer. So again, I'm not sure if there would be a similar concern about creating a 30-foot swath from McGuffey along the back of those, those properties on, what, what's the cul-de-sac?
Uh, Westchester.
Westchester.
Yeah. And in our experience from, this is probably, I think, the 10th pump station we've done in our program. The general preference is when we can keep the screening and not take down the trees. That's been the general preference. So again, we need to get from point A to point B. So if the board prefers a school on the property line, we'd be more than happy to do that. This one, we thought, was the least impact to the school and the neighboring residents.
It's also cheaper for the town, too.
Yes.
But actually, if, I mean, I know, you know, I spend a lot of time at Hammergrill and it actually, it's right at the edge of the field.
Yes.
So it kinda makes sense that, where, where it's designed.
And we actually are gonna be going into that, that scrub brush there. So we're gonna be gaining about 15 or so feet of field afterwards.
And what will be the, what's, if the town approves, if the board approves that for the town, what's the restriction for the school district on the use of the facility and property? If we wanted to put something there, basically within that 30 feet, we cannot do anything.
Uh, you can still use it. Even if you wanted to put parking lot over it, that's acceptable. The things we don't, we ask you don't do is put in trees, put in other utilities.
Could you put in a goalpost?
Uh, we'd have to be careful so that you don't, we could work with you so you don't punch a hole in our sewer.
Don't wanna hit the sewer.
Because Pop Warner does use that facility, aesthetically, we could all of a sudden get that request. I need to know measurements of field space in case a field had to go in there that we don't restrict the school district's ability to use its property without, sort of with hindsight, down the road.
Type of thing of like a goalpost, you know, again, that sewer's gonna be 10 to 12 feet deep, 10 to 15 feet deep. I don't envision the post going down 10 feet. So we, you know, if recognized, only, we would, we would be able to allow it with knowing that if we had a sewer break, we had to get in, we'd have to, have the right to take down the goalpost to maintain our sewer. And then we'd put it.
Why don't you put it back?
And then we'd put it back when we're done. Yeah, we've, I've got an easement we're just, we just obtained from Capital Cities on 9W where they're granting a sewer easement for us. And they have their sign and some, a sign and a flagpole. And we're working them to allow them to keep it and just recognize that if there's an issue, we can take it down and then put it back, so.
It's a 30-foot easement, but how big is the pipe itself, actually?
What is it, an 8-inch sewer? Yeah. The reason we need 30, yeah, the reason we need a 30-foot easement, and if this, this is something else we've also done, is basically, we really need a 10-foot easement for the pipe. We need the 30-foot easement if we have to get in there and repair it and to construct it. So if there was an issue along those lines, we can make it a 10-foot permanent sanitary easement and then adjoining 10, additional 10-foot access easements that allows us the right to get in there and do our, our work, so. Now, as far as, if the board decides to agree with it, what we would present to the board is, is if in general the routing is acceptable, we'd have a survey done with meets and bounds, a legal description, a technical description of the easement, and we would present that for approval.
I, I would say, if, if I can, where you proposed the start of the school side easement, in other words, you're going 15 feet from center line?
Yes.
The school side easement should not be on any already, in other words, it should not start on already cleared land?
Okay.
That's what you're suggesting, or?
Uh, we were.
Are you putting the center line right down the line of the shrub?
We were putting.
And 15 feet's coming out?
It's, in general, yes. The issue is that tree line isn't even.
Yeah, it's not.
So in most, you know, we're coming behind the backstop that there's already some cleared area there. So we're coming out there and kinda hitting a straight line. Because again, if we zigzagged along to do that, then we gotta put more structures in, which could potentially be something that kids could trip over, which, so, they're not a hazard, but we prefer not to put them in.
Yeah, my concern is that the easement doesn't encroach one way, but it encroaches the other.
Yeah, and.
Give us more clearing.
Yeah, which we, we don't mind, we're just.
And then the, the easement on the Waldemire farm, the land that they donated, that's what? That's supposed to be forever wild?
Yes, basically. It prohibits any clearing or any disturbance of the ground. But talking to our town attorney, if we can get them to give a approval of that, lift that restriction for our easement, then the town would be able, or the school board would be able to grant us the easement. So we've reached out to the Waldemires. We just found out about this restriction this week from our title report. So we haven't had a chance to, we basically just delivered the information to them and kinda told them about it. So hopefully, we'll be meeting with them in the next week or so to kinda walk it and show them what the issue is.
Until we have our board discussion.
One of the things I would suggest is that we already have a copy of this. If we can get this in color, get the alternative, like, this is probably your preference?
Mm-hmm.
One. Get the alternative that you've got up here in color as well, how it avoids that. And then I would say do a third along the property line. Those are basically everything that the board has talked about tonight. So that if there's any questions, that way we have one, two, and three. And if you can get those to Greg, then he'll work on our side for anything that the board.
That's not a problem. I could probably get that to Greg this week.
Any other?
As far as timing goes, again, we're looking to do this next summer. When would you be looking to have a public information? Who should we coordinate that with?
Basically, we're, we're gonna have to have a little discussion about that. I would probably take, you know, I'd probably use sort of the way that the town does it, use a 30-day window and a 30-day window. That would probably put us in November, December. And then hopefully, come back to the board for January.
Okay.
Which would give, I, I would hope, give you six months for planning time if it's approved at that point.
That'd be more, that'd be fine. So I should coordinate through Greg on?
Yeah, if you can coordinate with Greg. And then, just so that you know, one of the things the board said is we'd probably wanna make sure that the Hammergrill community understands that. You know, any, any notification you can get that says that we're in the discussions of it now to any residents that are affected or within 200 feet would probably be appropriate so that they know that they can contact us at this point and that there will be some open forums. And then we will probably use our S and N notifier for our Hammergrill to let them know that they were having discussion and then probably advertise the evening so that you can take any questions or thoughts on each of the plans.
Okay.
And then we'll send a representative to make sure that we're hearing the concerns. And then we'll report over the next two months back here and then we'll. and then we'll try to work with you, Paul, to invite you back if we have some questions, if not, for January.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Just one quick question, that triangle of the clear, on this version, you'd be going over private property, but it doesn't have a name on it.
It's, uh, Whitestone or Bridgestone.
Little building, build their own?
It's
That is, yeah.
Woodside, woodside.
That's to the left.
The long line.
The, that one there.
But it's the same property, I think.
Oh, that is, I thought that line.
It's the same parcel of the house that's set back.
Oh, they own both? Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Cause that actually is a picture.
Yeah, we would have to get an easement from that, a separate easement, actually, we'd have to get an easement from them as well as this property owner here, because right now our easement runs along the property. So if we come along this way, we can tie into the backside without getting an easement. We would need an easement from them to come across and then to get that little gap right in there.
When will you get the sign-offs for, for any of this, such as the easements on each one? Cause that sort of impacts some of the decision.
Again, our preferred option is to get the sign-off from the Waldemiers. We probably wouldn't approach the other owners unless the Waldemiers said it's a dead issue. So hopefully, it's run their schedule. We've already reached out to them.
As soon as you know, if you could let Greg know, he could update the board.
Yeah, and it would, honestly, it would probably make sense to hold off under the public information means until we get an answer from the Waldemiers that says, yes, we'll allow this, or no, we won't.
Yeah, if we could try to get that taken care of within the next thirty days, that would set a better timeline.
Yeah, and we understand if we're delayed on that, that's our delay, so.
Although, I mean, the land technically is ours. It's just that the easement, or the restriction was put on by the Waldemiers, so.
In the donation.
I mean, if the Waldemiers say yes, is the board ready, okay with it, cause I'd hate for us to get.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it's two separate approvals, completely different approvals.
Before the board, in other words, before the board could even say yes or consider it, they have to have that sign-off to even consider it, so.
Or you could do it conditionally upon approv- improvements, but if we don't have a verbal, then there's no sense granting. Okay? Thank, again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation.
Do you want to have a discussion?
The board want to discuss anything further then?
Well, I just wanted to say that I think it's a great idea to have a presentation to the Hammagrail PTA, but it's vitally important that we get feedback from not only the Hammagrail community, but from the community in that area. And I think it's a good idea to probably set up two times so that if somebody can't come one of the evenings, they can come the other evening. Um, I think
How about this?
Right, recorded and they can provide comments to the board too.
Well, how about this? I, I think Paul said a, a nice thing. If maybe during the month of November, we garner that for him to work with the PTA, and then that way we'll send a representative and then we'll have a board session, like a twenty-minute open hearing or whatever the board wishes to on December, sort of as the second follow-up. And hopefully by then, all the questions have been answered. And then the board can choose at that point to move to January to take any action or if they need any other questions. Does that sound okay?
That will hit both and what we'll do is we'll have Hammagrail address its own populace in the S and N's for the PTA and then we'll have the town address surrounding community members for the December.
All right, our next presentation is called the PE opt-out. Uh, this subject has come up numerous times in terms of during budget discussions, we always talk about how can we save money and, you know, there's been the, the, uh, state education regulations actually allow opt-out of PE as a requirement if other certain conditions are met. So, um, we are going to have Scott Landry, our high school principal, and Fred Powers, our PE supervisor, make a presentation to the board.
Thank you, man, thank you to, for inviting us here tonight to talk about this. The pilot program, uh, this year, we had fifty-one applications that were turned in. Forty-five were approved and, uh, actually we're down to five pending. I just got one of the, one of the pieces I was missing tonight. So actually we have forty-six approved and five pending, uh, for the students in both the athletic opt-out and the alternative opt-out, cause there's two pieces to that. As Matt mentioned, the state ed does allow this opt-out to occur and it's in the, uh, part one thirty-five regs. And it talks about a comparable time each semester in extra class programs for students who've demonstrated acceptable levels of physical fitness, physical skills and knowledge of physical education activities. And then the second is comparable time each semester, out-of-school activities approved by the physical education staff and the school administration. The second bullet pertains to extra class activities. The first pertains to the athletic opt-out piece. In the athletic option, when you look at and you break it down in terms of how the state, uh, looks for someone meeting the requirements, for the acceptable levels of physical fitness, we use the fitness gram. Other districts that do it have developed their own. The fitness gram is something that we use that looks at health-related fitness. We use that in our physical education program. So that's the tool that we use to attain the student meeting that requirement. The physical skills, knowledge of physical education activities, this is a senior-only opt-out and our seniors, as juniors, do the bulk of their competencies and proficiencies through our elective program. So when the state, uh, looks at what students should be attaining, they're looking for proficiencies and competencies across a variety of activities. And through our elective program, our students usually attain it through there. And then a comparable time each semester to what they would be in physical education. So those are the criterias for the athletic option. In the alternative out-of-school activity, there's a little bit more information that is required to make sure that, that there is rigor to the program. And we have some of the criteria from before, acceptable levels of physical fitness, physical skills, knowledge of physical education activities. But the program needs to be instructional in nature. There needs to be assessments that are part of the program, needs to have comparable time. And then the instructor actually does have to be approved by the Board of Education. So in the packet that students submit, we need to have the, the resume of the instructor and we would bring that, uh, to the board for approval. And that's for the out-of-class activity.
Can you give examples?
Yeah, the, uh, uh, alternative out-of-school activity, we, actually out of the fifty-one that students, the applications that were submitted, we right now just have one for this program and the student is doing horseback riding. And she's gathering the information because it's actually a program that is a nationally accredited, uh, program. So there are, there is instruction, the assessments would be at the, um, I'm not quite, whether it shows or, or the, where she goes to compete, that have the assessments as part of that. And then for that national certification, they have to have a hundred hours of instruction. So that would be an example. Another might be someone taking karate, where they would be working towards in obtaining a belt. Uh, as opposed to someone that might just go and, uh, go down to fitness for her and go work out. So the, the program does have to be an instructional program with, with assessments. For the extra class athletic option, again, we're looking at seniors. In our discussion, we, to meet the comparable time out, it's participation in two varsity sports. When we were trying to figure out how do we work with a student that's doing a winter and spring sport, that kind of brought up some concerns, cause what we didn't want to have happen is a student opt-out and then get to a spring sport and then decide not to do it. And then they would have been out of physical education since September. So what we did was, say that the students had to be in that sport as a junior, playing varsity sports. So that gave us some pretty good guarantee that the student would go ahead and make that team and, and compete during that spring season. And then they must meet the regulations as stated prior. For the alternative out-of-school activity, they need to be a senior and then they need to meet the regulations that was presented prior. In terms of the grading for both programs, they would be pass/fail and they would be predicated on successful completion of their season or their program of study. The impact from the athletic standpoint with coaches, it really doesn't impact the coaches at all. Coaches should be doing attendance regularly with their teams. I'll be checking in with the coaches in terms of if any student drops off or not. And then we would just look at their final rosters in terms of, do they do final completion? In regards to class size, looking at our junior, senior classes, right now the class average is at thirty-two students per teacher. With the pilot program and those students coming out, it drops that down to about thirty. If you look over the eight periods of the day, I think the one class that really had an impact was, I think it was either Mike Charvet or Sean Dannhies' class. I think there were forty-three students in the class and I think six or seven were part of the opt-outs, so that brought it down to about thirty-seven to thirty-eight students. In terms of scheduling, physical education traditionally is scheduled across students' science labs. So they may have science third period and then the lab would be the fourth or maybe second. And then physical education is matched during that lab period. So forty of the fifty-one students currently have science. And removing the physical education keeps that science in there, so in terms of freeing up a period to take another class, doesn't, uh, it doesn't really work. Seven do not take science and four of the students are in the lab school. In terms of the impact on their lunch, thirty-six of the fifty-one currently have lunch, scheduled both semesters. Eleven have lunch only one semester, four hardy souls have no lunch. And then by opting out, three students do gain lunch out of those four students. Of the ones that have no lunch or have lunch one semester, some of those students actually have period eight off. So they elected to take period eight off at the end of the day versus having a lunch. And then during free periods, forty-four of the students have at least one free period, and this is prior to the opt-out. So they have, forty-four have one free period both semesters, nineteen have two free periods both semesters, six have one period off one semester, and two students are chock full both semesters. Actually, they have quite impressive schedules. Questions?
Lynn, go.
So eventually the students drop out of the sport, then they're automatically placed back to class?
We would have to place them back in, yes.
And the same thing if they were asked to lead the team or whatever, for whatever reason?
We hope they're not asked, but yes, the same thing would occur, yes.
If there's some reason for that?
Mm-hmm.
And with those class levels, there's no problem with fitting back into any of the classes?
Um, well, that's a good question. And right now they would probably go back the same period they were in. Right now they started the school year in a, in a class, so they would be able to go back in, yes. Right now, they're all, the students that have opted out are placed in a class under my name, ninth period. So they're scheduled to be for the ninth period, but if that occurred, we would put them back in during that period of time.
Fred, you had fifty-one who, applicants, how many applicant, how many students were eligible?
I, I didn't look at how many were eligible. I know that we had close to seventy students pick up applications and fifty-one turned them in. I did see some of the students in the hallway and some said that, uh, when they thought about it, they didn't want to opt-out. Others said that their parents wouldn't let them opt-out. We actually had two students who opted out and then asked if they could stay in till the first semester. It, it would be fairly close with the seniors that are two-sport athletes. I didn't look at last year's list in terms of the numbers.
But it was open to all seniors then?
Oh, absolutely, yes, yep.
And, and I guess that would be my question. This is just senior numbers. We haven't even dealt with for this year, anything with junior or sophomore. This is a pilot program over
Only seniors.
Many years and we're trying to work out the bugs at this point.
Correct. The, the concern with juniors would be meeting the proficiencies and competencies. If we were going to look at juniors or sophomores, how we assess their proficiencies and competencies for this program would change. And would, um, so that would be a concern. That would be a little bit more
That would be like the next level after we implement this.
Within the suburban council, there are six schools that do run pilot pro, uh, opt-out programs. Most do it for one quarter. Two do it for two semesters. We're the only one that does it for a full year. The majority do juniors and seniors. Two schools do go sophomore through senior, but again, it's only for one, one quarter. And I think there's two schools that actually put the students in study hall. They don't have a free period at that time. And of the six schools that do not, two had recently done this and have now phased the program out with, uh, concerns in terms of the SLOs. And there's another school out of that six that will be phasing it out over the next two years.
One of the concerns that when we were, um, going through the process that we in, um, came up with was making sure students are actually participating in at least two sports for that time period. Because if you get into sophomores and even juniors sometimes, there's a chance that they could be cut from a team. There's a chance that they decide they don't want to participate and now they're behind in their phys ed credits, which they need for graduation. So there's always that fine line as to, you know, how much do you go to that point? And then students are playing catch-up when many, I mean, you see even our seniors, many of them have very full schedules. So that's something that we need to consider. If we were to look at, um, allowing, for example, juniors to participate, is that they do have to be in at least two sports during the course of the year. And it gets a little trickier to make sure that, that that's going to happen.
Again, along with that, most students are going to do the same sports junior year as a senior. So when you go back again and you look at the proficiencies and competencies across a variety, they're really repeating the same thing the second year. And we really, uh, we really try to get students to get that breadth of competencies across a variety. And that has, i- i- if it was something looking at juniors and sophomores, that would be really something we would need to look very, very hard at, how we would see how they attain the competencies, how we would measure that and assess that prior to going into it.
And your opinion, should we be doing?
Uh, that's a great question. Um, I, for juniors and sophomores, I would say absolutely not. Seniors, uh, I mean, I was not a happy man last spring when it kept getting brought up again. But as, as you look at that with the seniors, uh, they really have done a very good job in terms of the competencies and proficiencies and where they're at, and you look at the schedules and where the students at. I, I, I'm not wholly opposed to it. Uh, one of the things that I do want to track is the, uh, the sign-out sheets to see where they're going and see if they're actually leaving the building or whether they're staying in the building. I like to see really what the students are doing with their time, uh, to see.
It doesn't seem like a lot of positives.
Pardon?
It doesn't seem like there are a lot of positives to having it.
They, they're
I mean, a couple of kids picked up a class.
Well, nobody picked up a class.
Or I mean, were able to take a class that they wouldn't have.
No, they got a lunch. They, nobody would
And some got lunch, but that's, otherwise it's free time.
It, it's free time, but when you look at their schedules, I, I looked at all fifty-one schedules and the classes that they're taking. Nobody's taken cupcake classes this senior year. I mean, uh, they're, they really have impressive schedules. So if they're, if they're using that time to study, then there may be some value in that. Again, if you, if you look at the schedules and just the fact that forty are taking sciences as seniors, tells you what kind of student body we have and how dedicated they are.
I think that's where the plus to this is, is that it buys students time in terms of that they have full schedules, so that's one semester. They don't have three open periods that they can dedicate to work that ordinarily they might not have because they're leaving here right at the end of school and are in practice two, three hours. But this gives them a little bit of time. That's the biggest thing that I've heard in terms of how the students are using it. So I think it's good for that and I will also say this. I think it goes to our philosophy of, we want to start transitioning our students to the responsibility of being, moving on to that next level, whether it be college or the real world. It's time management, it's also what you do with responsibilities. And that's the one thing, if these kids start abusing the privilege somehow or it does not work and they aren't using it for the right reason, well, then we will take it away. But for those students who are going, hey, that gives me three periods that I can come into the LMC and knock off three labs before practice, that's what we want to instill in them. And it's a senior privilege, something to work to.
I, I think the other piece that we would look at from a physical education department is what juniors are taking in terms of their units. And if they're in team sports, if they're taking two team sports, we would want to make sure that as juniors in their PE program, they're taking not team sports, but lifetime carryover sports. So we would track that through this year and kind of look at those pieces.
Just for any of the PIG students, are any of you participating in the pilot program? Any comments about it, or?
Um, it's actually, that's been me a lot. I'm third grade, I've had these second, not super grade, but basically two days. And I'm just getting clear about that besides, and that's a really challenging task for me right now. So it actually gives me a great opportunity to study more and to do homework that I don't have time to do when I'm getting home at five o'clock every night, and sometimes at nine, if I go to work, I have to practice. So for me, it's very beneficial.
Great, thank you for the feedback. Anyone else? Thank you.
No, I was just going to say it'd be good to get your analysis sort of after the, you know, you see a year of this or however you're tracking where they're going, because it would be interesting to, to make sure that it's having the intended effect of freeing up time for kids to study and not to go to Stewart's and, you know.
Well, they already have that time now, this is just.
Right, right. Well, extra time.
And stay there longer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point in, in the meeting, it's an opportunity for any visitors who have, would like to address the board on any agenda item. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to? Okay, moving on. Item number eight, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, A through F. That's a first? And a second? Any discussion? No? Okay.
Who got the first and who got the second? First, second?
You guys are so quick at that.
No, I have a discussion. On action item D, the audit report, the corrective action plan, we're definitely going to look into or probably implement the, the issue with the lab school and that monitoring, not just evaluate it. It's going to be implemented?
Yes, in fact, we've already started.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, actually, just so the board knows, because of that citation, both Ms. Kehoe and myself had a meeting with the lab school, as well as we set some understandings that I think they were very open to, and they had their first meeting to help address that today, as well as hopefully make some items and processes that they go through much easier for the people that are currently doing the financial work. So as Judy told me today, everything looks in very good order. However, it's not necessarily the same way that the school district does it, and everybody's been very good and cooperative in how we can best do it so that we're all looking very good on it. So I think that will hopefully be no issues in the future for that.
And then two other things, item B, the Bethel Music Association, want to thank them for that donation, and also the item E, the Sunderland's PTA for their donation also. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items, A through J. That's a first?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number 10, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, A through M. That's a first?
Second.
Second? We got two seconds, so.
Oh, I don't care.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number, correspondence action items, item number 11. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action item, A through C.
Some of.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number 12, recognition of visitors. Is there anybody who would like to say anything that's about a non-agenda item? I guess we'll have to wait till nine o'clock now, kids. Okay, future meetings. We have, our next regular scheduled board meeting is November 6th here, November 20th, and then Wednesday, December 4th. So make sure you tell your fellow students that they have a few more meetings to make it to before the end of the semester. We usually have a big crowd of PIG students the very last meeting of the semester, so. There is no need for us to go back to executive session?
Well, if I can just remind the board that the next meeting, at the board's authorization, I will be out of town on November 6th for a district, or National Superintendent Summit that will be sponsored by district administrators across the nation and the National Organization District Administrator. And I just wanted to make sure that the community understood as well. So the meeting will go on, life carries on. And it will be shorter, because I won't have to talk.
I know, you guys could have been out of here at 7:30, can you imagine if you didn't?
Jody, you're going to go on for an hour.
But, but also, it is also our Board of Education recognition night, so I will have a little video presentation for you. But I also want to thank you for every bit of time and commitment that you give and the efforts that you do, really, week in, week out, month in, month out, and God help you, budget season's just around the corner. So thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I do.
Oh, first and second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, so moved.
Students, there's sheets up here if you want to sign in for your teachers, as well as get the Board of Education members or the administration.